Good afternoon, everyone. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on Thursday, June 3, 2021. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held Thursday, September 2, 2021, at 4:00 in the Board Conference Room, 2nd floor at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Coming Street, Omaha, Nebraska. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Retirement Office at the Teacher Administrative Center during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board of Education Meeting Room on the North Wall. Would you please call the roll? Block? Not here yet. Erdnberger?
Here.
Head?
Present.
Hirschenbach?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Logan?
Present.
Born. Mr. Born is excused for today. Five present. You have a quorum. Thank you very much. Ms. Carter, and I was going to open it up for public comment, if there is any. Do I don't think we've received any? No forms? No public comment? Okay, well, that's, that's fine. Moving on to the next item. A quick introduction of what we fondly call ourselves, the Transition Board of Trustees, resulting from LB 147. Some of us are new to this board. Some of us are from the old board and new to this board. So if each of us could just give a quick introduction. I'm, I'll start just saying, first of all, that Mr. Born has tested positive for COVID, so he's not with us today. But he is still going to be a member, one of the transition trustees. My name is Jane Erdnberger. I am currently serving as Vice President of the Omaha Public School Board. And as you may know, LB 147 outlined the membership of this board, and two of those members were supposed to be OPS School Board members, of which I am one. With that in mind, I'll have Mr. Head introduce himself as the other.
Hi, Spencer Head, the other member from the Omaha Public Schools Board of Education that represents Sub District 5 on the school board and chair our Legislative Subcommittee, which is how I got, got chosen to be, be part of the group on the OSERS Board. We worked very closely with, with the district on LB 147, so.
Thank you. Faith?
I'm Faith Johnson. I represent the Certified Teachers for the Board. And I currently, this is my, I'll be starting my ninth year with OPS on Monday, and I teach middle school, 6th and 7th grade, so.
And you had been serving on the board, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, I have.
Great, no, thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I'm Scott Hirschenbach. I'm one of the Business Community members. I've been on the board for a couple of years. I work at Mutual of Omaha, and happy to serve.
We're glad to have you. Thank you. Dr. Logan?
Cheryl Logan, ex-official member and role of Superintendent. Thank you.
And Sharon?
Sharon Block?
Yes.
I am with Northwest High School. I am treasurer, and I represent the classified employees of OPS.
Sharon Block, Northwest High School, Treasurer, and I represent the classified employees of OPS.
Great, we're glad to have you aboard. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is action on the adoption of the OPS Board of Education Rules and Regulations on the Operation and Management of the Omaha School Employees Retirement System. Just a little background is that, and I will look to Mr. Head to correct me if I have it wrong, but in this last session of the unicameral, LB 147 was passed, which provides for the transfer of the administration of OSERS to the Npers down in Lincoln and in September of 2024. So one of the reasons the agenda refers to the Transition Board of Trustees is we will be serving as trustees of this board until that transition occurs, subject to reappointment and whatnot. And that is why we are here today. Some of us, first time in our first capacities. And we are now a, a body of the Omaha Public School District. And in that respect, the Omaha Public School Board adopted rules and regulations for OSERS at its July 12 meeting. And just for appearances' sake, if nothing else, I'd like to have somebody give a motion about adopting them for our applicable to OSERS, please, and thank you. Is that okay? Okay. Spencer?
I'd make a motion to adopt the rules and regulations as proposed.
Second.
And, okay, we have a motion by Mr. Head and a second by Ms. Johnson. And Ms. Carter, would you please take roll call? Johnson?
Aye.
Hirschenbach?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Six ayes. Thank you. We're going to move on to the election of Board Officers for OSERS. I would like to start out by nominating Mr. Born to serve as President. I have spoken to him. He is willing and ready to serve. So I would like to move that we elect Mr. Born as Board President.
Ms. Erdnberger, I would suggest that if we can, I know we'd have to defer to Ms. Carter. Is there, if it's possible to wait until Mr. Born is present? Just as a matter of course. I don't have any, I agree with you, I'm sure of that. I just wonder if it, it seems appropriate to wait until he's here if we don't have to do the election today. If we have to do it today, then that's fine.
Looking at counsel, do we, do we need a Pres-, to elect a President today?
Well, practically, probably should elect him in July according to our new board rules and regulations. But I, I think that it, since it's one meeting past that, if we go on more, there's no harm to doing that if you would like to do it, though. So it's certainly, certainly your discretion to do it whichever way you want.
With that in mind, I think we can delay the election of the Board President, but we'll go on with the election of the other officers. Nobody, okay. Mr. Head, do you have a nomination to make?
Yeah, I'd nominate Jane Erdnberger to be the Vice President.
Second.
Thank you very much. Nomination by Mr. Head, and that was a second by Dr. Logan, I believe. Ms. Carter, will you please take roll? Block?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Hirschenbach?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
I mean, I'm presuming you're not going to vote for yourself, but. Right, so, 1, 2, 3, 5 ayes. Madam Vice President? Thank you. And President pro tem at the moment, I think, is how it would be described. The last officer will be the Board Secretary. And I'm ready to hear a nomination for someone to serve as Board Secretary.
I move to keep Cecilia Carter as our Secretary.
Second? Give me a second. Okay. We have a first by Ms. Johnson and a second by Ms. Erdnberger. Roll call, please. Logan?
Aye.
Hirschenbach?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Six ayes. Thank you. Okay, in the packet of materials on your desk is a copy of the minutes from the June 3, 2021 meeting of the OSERS Board. And I would like to hear a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved?
Second. Second, okay, thank you. Roll call, please. I'm sorry, that was. Hirschenbach? Moved, Head, seconded. Okay. Johnson?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Hirschenbach?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Six ayes. Thank you. Moving on to a discussion of the financial statements. Ms. Carter will give us an overview of the May and June 2021 financial statements.
Okay, for the month of May 2021, the OSERS Trust Fund had a valuation of $1,470 million with cash on hand for administration of $13,959,000. And for the month of June, June 2021, the OSERS Trust Fund had a valuation of $1,518 million, and that's an increase of approximately 24% from the same time last year. At June 30, the trust fund had a cash on hand for administrative purposes of $14,382,000. That ends the financial statement report.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Maybe at the next meeting when we've processed this information. Thank you. Moving on then to a discussion about the status of the compliance audit. The compliance audit is an audit that is being done in connection with the transfer of OSERS to Npers. And Ice Miller is undertaking that compliance audit for us, and we'll hear a report from them via the video conferencing. Is Audra joining?
She should be joining right now. I just sent her a note.
Are you trying to get rid of our box?
Uh-uh. Okay, you two are on full screen. And there's the board that you can see.
All right. Thank you, Cecilia.
I'll let you introduce yourselves.
Thank you, Cecilia. Good afternoon, Board Members. My name is Rob Goss. I'm a partner with the law firm Ice Miller in Indianapolis. I'm Audra.
And I'm Audra Ferguson Allen, and I'm also a partner at Ice Miller with Rob.
We just wanted to give a brief update to the trustees in regards to the work that we are doing on the compliance review for OSERS that was pursuant to the RFP that was issued, and we were selected by the prior board. Under the proposal, we have our first draft report due to the board on October 6, with a final draft due October 27. We already have been working on a compliance review of the entire plan as it's drafted. That's a review of the statute and the rules, both the prior rules and then the new rules which were adopted July 12. And in our compliance review, we are noting any areas for potential amendment and making some suggestions as to language that may want to be adopted. We understand from Ms. Carter this afternoon that there's some need to get adoption or amended language as soon as possible back, and we are working on doing that for purposes of the rules to get as much language as we can back to you by the 1st of next week. Otherwise, we think that we are right on target or ahead of schedule for purposes of the project. We're going to be providing initial report to Cecilia so that we can work through, at a high level, the compliance review. And then also, as a next step, start the actual operational compliance review in terms of making sure that various limits under the Internal Revenue Code are being followed and what mechanisms are in place to ensure that those, those limits are being met. And then otherwise, I believe that we are, after the issuance of our final report, we're also due to appear in public hearing and present our findings to the board in early November. So with that, Audra, did I miss anything?
No, I think that's a good summary. As Rob mentioned, we are prepared to have some suggested amendments ready early next week, but certainly it is a work in process as we start to, or as we complete our planned compliance review. Some of the amendments you will see are to tighten up the language, to be a little bit more precise with the Internal Revenue Code. And then there also will be some suggested amendments that we believe are required to maintain compliance with the Internal Revenue Code.
Thank you for that. One of the things that we presented on to the prior board was that we would make amendments, suggested amendments for consideration, that if those amendments were adopted, we knew that would be, they would be accepted by the IRS if we filed the plan for a determination letter filing, since it has not been filed with the IRS previously. And that would be part of the goal of the suggested language that we would make. The other, the other thing I missed mentioning is that the compliance review is intended to bring the plan current through the most recent changes in federal law, which last year was the Secure Act and the CARES Act. And so with these amendments, the plan would be ahead of schedule on adopting some amendments.
That's great, thank you very much. I believe our next board meeting where we could consider, the, the school board meeting where we could consider those rules and regs amendments is the 16th of August, I believe. So getting them next week would be really, would give the Policy Committee of the School Board an opportunity to review them and then incorporate them for presentation to the board. So that timing is, really works out really well. You mentioned that you were going to be giving an initial report to Ms. Carter. I think I didn't hear what the timing on that was.
Yeah, so we're finishing that. I anticipate it will be possibly by the middle of this month, certainly before the end of the month. And we want to work through that with her. And that timing will be good, because then that gives us a full month before we finalize draft report.
And the other thing that I just wanted to clarify, and then I'll open it for people's questions. You said that you anticipate, in connection with delivering the final audit or shortly after, making a presentation, and I missed who that presentation was to.
Oh, sorry. Under, under the proposal, I believe it's contemplated that we would make a proposal to the board in open session for public comment in early November.
Okay, okay. I'll clarify whether that's this board or the school board?
Madam President, I believe the RFP said the school board and actually the Legislative Committee.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any questions about the report of the status of that compliance audit? Nope. Feels like law school, everybody's just looking down. So I always pretended I dropped my pencil personally. Okay, then I think that we have completed this item on the agenda. And thank you very much for your time and getting coordinated to both be available at the same time. We really appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Okay, so that was item number eight. Moving on to item number nine, which is a presentation of a study by our actuaries, I believe. Are they available? Not here yet, so can you put in the next? No problem. Okay, we will skip number nine. Do we have Sym Johnson available to do the financial audit discussion? Okay, can you do this?
Okay. Madam Chair, the engagement letter that is in your packages was received by our offices like two days after our last, the last June board meeting, so it didn't make the June board meeting. It was reviewed by legal counsel, McGrath North. It does acknowledge, and, and Sym Johnson both acknowledged the passing of LB 147, whereby Sym Johnson will do the fiscal audit for, excuse me, do the financial audit for fiscal year 2021. But beginning in 2022, OSERS financial audits will be conducted by the state auditor. Sym Johnson has also acknowledged that they will assist the state auditor with the first audit in 2022, because the state auditor will use Sym Johnson's work papers in order to cover the period of January 1 through August 31. And then the state auditor will cover September, October, November, and December. And as I said, Sym Johnson acknowledges that although they had a RFP in, or a proposal for three years, they're only going to do the first two years and then stop. With that, I'd ask for a motion to approve and authorize the signing of this engagement letter.
I move the Board of Trustees accept the letter of engagement with Sym Johnson for the audit of financial statements for OSERS for the fiscal year ending August 31, 2021, and authorize the Executive Director of the Board, our Executive Director and the Board President to execute the same.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a first by Ms., a motion made by Mr. Head and the second made by Mr. Hirschenbach. And would you do the roll call, please, Ms. Carter? Certainly. Logan?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Hirschenbach?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Six ayes. Great, thank you very much. And moving ahead then, and we'll go back if we have to. Ms. Carter, would you please give us an overview on the billing and payment process being undertaken by OSERS during the transition period?
Certainly, Madam President. This is actually a transition process of billing and payments for the OPS School District. So the Omaha, OPS Accounting Department has coordinated with the Npers Accounting Department to oversee and monitor the billing of the cost associated with the transition of the OSERS administration to Npers. The bill provides that Npers may bill back the cost of the transition to OPS. And I do want to emphasize that this is OPS General Fund and is not from the OSERS Trust Fund. The document prepared by OPS Accounting, you know, just provides the detail on the billing process. And just for a very high level, what was agreed to is that OPS would, in essence, put in escrow $50,000 on deposit with Npers. So as they spend it down, they will coordinate replenishing that escrow. So this is not a document that binds the OSERS billing. This is strictly for OPS.
Okay, thank you. So OPS is going to be basically maintaining a $50,000 balance in...
Yeah, you could almost think of it as a impressed petty cash fund. So we will put a deposit on file with the state. And the whole reason for that, quite honestly, is the state does not have monies that don't belong to other plans. And so as they start incurring costs, they would have to take monies from an existing plan that would then need to be reimbursed, and that's kind of messy. So we've agreed to start with a $50,000 deposit. Each month, we will get an invoice for the details. We'll pay the invoice just like we normally would. So we're replenishing to a $50,000 level every month. In a year, we will review that, because they will start incurring some significant costs for software licensing and other third-party costs. Right now, they just expect it to be existing personnel, and we think $50,000 is plenty for that.
Great, thanks. I, I knew that some of the computer transfer was going to be a significantly larger amount, but you're, that's what you're saying is, that's not likely to be incurred until?
The conversation I had with them, they expect kind of a slow start, if you will. And it's all existing staff, no new staff. And they don't expect those significant IMS costs to take place for at least a year.
Great, thank you. Good to know. Quick question. Will those, those monthly deposit invoices? This is just my own ignorance. Is that reported to us, the OSERS Board? The school board?
They'll come to the school board.
They'll come to the school board?
Just as one of our claims outlays.
Out of the general fund?
Yep.
Okay.
And so when we do receive the invoices, we'll, we'll vet those and review those. We'll have billing rates and the number of hours. We'll work with Cecilia and her team to make sure that they're verified before they get paid. But they'll go through the OPS Board of Trustees' claims activity.
Okay, great. Thanks. That's what I was wondering. Does anybody else have any questions about this? All righty then. Moving on to the Executive Director's Report. That would be you, Ms. Carter.
Since our last meeting, just for general information, OPS Board of Education voted on June 21 to appoint Ms. Megan Neelis Brash, Brash? Brash. As legal counsel to the OSER's plan. So she's back. The policies and the rules and regulations for the administration of OSER's has been posted to our website. Director Gurke, who is the Director of Npers, he and I have met and have planned to hold monthly touch base meetings on this transition for just those little things of, you know, did something happen or did we have, could we do it differently to make sure this goes through smoothly? And just a follow-up to last month's meeting where Mr. Hirschenbach did make inquiry about our fiduciary liability insurance and asked about the cost. So I did make inquiry. There are no adjustments to the premiums for the period of May 2021 through 2022. The underwriters are aware of LB 147 and the governance changes and have requested the names of the new transition board, which has been shared with them. And the underwriters are awaiting the compliance audit report when it is released at the end of 2021. So that's where we stand. That ends the Executive Director's Report. If anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Moving on to the trustees' report, which I guess is us. Okay, Dr. Logan?
We met, myself, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Ray, who else did I miss? I missed somebody. Oh, yes, and Mr. Kramer. Met with the team at Npers, Randy Gurke and his team to, it was a brief meeting, to understand how their plan to move forward. They will be issuing a request to, for proposals in reference to having a consultant who will come in and manage the transition. We expect that to happen October. It was a brief meeting. We were informed that anytime we meet, we will get billed. So we were glad it was brief. Probably get billed for a half hour, although the meeting was about a quarter of an hour. So that's all I have. But it was good to meet everyone that's on their team, especially connect with their IT lead who will spend a significant amount of time working with our IT team managing the transition. This report was about one-fifth as long as the meeting.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything to report? Okay, let's go on to item 14, a discussion of and/or actions on the payroll, retirements, death, and refunds. Ms. Carter is going to give an overview, and then we will take action.
Okay. One second. All right. For the month of July, the pension payroll was $11,451,348 paid to 5,200 payees. For, for the month of August, the pension payroll was, or is, $11,464,222 paid to 5,213 payees. For the months of July and August, staff payroll was respectively $32,303. For the month of July, there were 20 new retirements, adding $55,372 to the monthly pension payroll. For the months of August, there were 42 new retirements, adding $83,016 to the monthly pension payroll. For July and August, we removed 13 pension payments due to the death of the retiree. We continued joint and survivor annuities to 14, excuse me, to four joint annuitants due to the death of the retiree. We ceased payment on two beneficiaries who received the remaining payment on a term certain annuity. We ceased payment on three retirements because the beneficiary elected a lump sum payment for the remaining employee contributions. In total, the processing of the deaths for July and August resulted in stopping $38,737 in monthly payments, but continuing monthly payments to joint annuitants totaling $6,162. For the months of July and August, we processed 44 refunds, which are requests for distributions, for a total of $549,298. Accounts payable for the months of July and August were $17,712, $7,000 for legal in July, and $10,000 for the compliance audit firm you just heard from today. But I am going to ask the board, today I received their second billing, which is an additional $10,000. They're breaking it out over the course of several months. And so instead of waiting till next month, I'm going to pay the full $20,000 when I pay this, this month. So, so $17,000 for, yeah, so additional $10,000. So total, what am I going to say? Total accounts payable will be $27,712. That is an overview of payroll processing for the months of July and August.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Do we need to take some action on that?
Yes.
Okay.
I move the Board of Trustees for the months of July and August ratify and approve the pension payroll, staff payroll, new retirements, terminations, and surviving annuitants due to death of the retiree, refunds, and accounts payable as was described.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschenbach. Will you take the roll call, please?
Head?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Hirschenbach?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Thank you. Now let's return to item, where was that? Nine, right? Eight or nine, whichever. The one that has Kavanaugh, McDonald making a presentation to us about their, OSER's experience study for 2017 through 2020. Thank you. And members of the board, there is a copy of this presentation in the materials that you have in front of you.
Madam Chair, are you ready for us to proceed?
Vice President, I just want to make that very clear.
Pardon me?
I'm not, I'm not the president, and if chosen, will not serve.
All right.
Thank you.
Stand corrected. All right. Well, thank you. It's our pleasure to be with you today to kind of take the first step on this journey that we call an experience study. My name's Pat Beckham, and I'm the consulting actuary for the retirement system. How about a long history with OSER's that dates back to, well, a really long time, back in the early 90s? So I've been doing experience studies for the system for a long time. With me today is Brian Hoagie, and I'm going to kind of give you the framework and the background on experience studies, and then Brian's going to walk through the specific findings and recommendations on the demographic assumptions. So I thought since we have some, some new trustees, in fact, I'm not sure if any of you have been through an experience study before, I wanted to just pause and kind of really set the very, very big picture, 30,000-foot view about the actuarial valuation process. That process is used to determine the contributions to fund the benefits to members. Okay? The challenging part of that process is those future benefit payments are unknown and dependent on a lot of variables that we need to take into consideration, but we don't have the answers. That's where the assumptions come in. So we use a lot of assumptions to help us project things into the future that we don't know. The experience study is a really important piece of governance for the board that periodically takes a break, steps back, and looks at everything that's happened in the last study period, which for OSER's is four years, compares that to what the current assumptions anticipated, and then does some analysis and discussion to figure out whether those assumptions should be retained or if they should be changed. So in Nebraska, there is a statutory requirement to perform an experience study every four years if you have a defined benefit plan. OSER's has always done regular experience studies even before it was a statutory requirement. Our study period used to be five years, but now everybody uses four. Again, it's a very important piece of the operation and the governance of the retirement system. The last experience study covered the period from September 1, 2012, through August 31, 2016. That is back when we used to do valuations on September 1. That was changed in 2017 to a January 1 measurement date and rather conveniently synced up with the four-year experience study. So that was a positive thing from our perspective. It's much harder to measure when you don't have equal 12-month periods. So I mentioned, or I talked about it being a journey. There's a lot of information that gets shared in an experience study. And to be honest, it's a little overwhelming, whether it's a sharing or you receiving that information. And we're kind of breaking it into pieces to help make that a little bit more manageable. So today, we'll talk about our analysis and recommendations for demographic assumption changes. You don't necessarily have to take action on that today. Obviously, you could if you wish to. We will come back, we're thinking in October, and follow up if you have specific questions or additional information that you identified today that you would like to look at. We'll bring that back to you. And then we'll talk in October about our initial recommendations on the economic assumptions. As you know, the funds are invested by the Nebraska Investment Council, and their investment consultant is Aon. And we've been in communication with them. They are sending us their updated capital market assumptions next week. So we'll need those to do our work and some time before we come back in October. November, December can be kind of fluid. It's really whatever you need for follow-up information. We're hoping by the end of the year, you'll be comfortable making a decision and adopting new assumptions that we will use then in the January 1, 2022 valuation. All right. So I mentioned earlier that the actuarial process is all about developing a contribution pattern to fund benefits for members while they're working. That's a very long-term proposition. If we looked at the current membership, those benefit payments would stretch out more than 80 years. And again, many, many unknowns affect the amount of those benefits, when they're going to start, how long they're going to be paid. And we use actuarial assumptions to help us model what we think will happen in the future. So we have a stream of future benefit payments, which we then put in terms of today's dollars to compare to the assets that are in the trust, and then we figure out a way to fund that difference. That's what it's all about. So the assumptions impact the allocation of costs over time. And that's why they're so important, is these costs are essentially getting shared with the district slash taxpayers and members because this is part of a deferred compensation. So we don't really want to be overly conservative or overly aggressive. We're generally trying to kind of shoot for the middle, but it, you know, there is no right answer. You'll hear me say that later. And last, remember, these are assumptions. Okay, I've heard the comment made, well, if the actuary would just change the investment return assumption, everything would be fine. Well, it won't unless you can earn the assumption. And to the extent that actual experience differs from the assumption, you're going to see funded ratios and contributions amount differ as well. So again, there isn't a right answer at this point in time. You can look back 30 years from now and evaluate the choices that we're going to all make together, but we don't know right now. And we really need to make it clear that there is indeed a range of reasonable assumptions for every assumption that we look at, whether it's investment return, mortality, retirement. There, there's a range that's reasonable that you could pick within that range and would still accomplish the purpose of funding the benefits. Particularly on demographic assumptions, there's a lot of professional judgment involved. We work only with governmental retirement systems. So we have a lot of expertise and knowledge that we've gathered kind of over the years in working with lots of different clients. And that helps kind of set the background for us when we look at your information, your analysis, and make a recommendation. The assumptions are intended to be long-term. They're long-term estimates, but we can't ignore what happens in the short term. And we're measuring in the short term. So we have a little bit of a disconnect, a long-term assumption that we're measuring every four years. We take that into account. We go back and we look at the last experience study and see what the trend was there, what information was. At least gives us eight years. It's kind of starting to be a longer period and has more credibility. But we know that there are going to be fluctuations from, from year to year and experience study to experience study. And the other part of it is, this group is not large enough to not think that we're going to have these, these fluctuations because of the size of the group. You know, if we look at CalSTRS, they have 500,000 actives. Their, their results are going to tend to be more stable just because you need a lot of data applied to probabilities to make those results consistent. So the assumptions are important because they impact liabilities, which then impact contributions and costs, that allocation of costs over periods of time. So it's important to make sure that those assumptions continue to be the best estimate of future experience. That's why the experience study is such an important piece of work on the liability side of the house. On the asset side, asset allocation, which the Nebraska Investment Council takes care of, but that's super important on the asset side of the balance sheet. This is probably the most important thing on the liability side of the balance sheet. So this is the study where we really analyze and we look at everything that's used in the valuation process, methods, actuarial methods, and actuarial assumptions. And we evaluate whether they're sort of doing their job or whether we think there needs to be a change. We will look back to measure and evaluate experience, but we don't drive looking in the rearview mirror. We look at it, we consider it, but we're always looking forward in the valuation. Our job is to make, you know, to perform the analysis and make a recommendation to you as the board. But you are the fiduciaries. So you have the legal responsibility and liability that goes with that, and you actually make the selection of the assumptions. So you can choose to go with our recommendation or not on each and every assumption. And again, those assumptions will impact the cost and the allocation, the incidence of contri- And again, those assumptions will impact the cost and the allocation, the incidence of contributions. But the true costs of the system are benefits that are paid to members, right? Kind of benefits that Ms. Carter just described as we were walking in. Assumptions don't affect those at all. Okay, those will be what they will be. So this is important, but it does not change the benefit payments coming out of the trust. So the process we go through in the experience study is to look back over the study period and compare what actually happened each year in that study period with what was expected using the current assumptions. And that helps give us an indication of what the fit is, whether actual experience is consistent with what we expected. So past experience can be very helpful and provide strong guidance for certain assumptions like mortality. So that's involuntary. It's not particularly helpful for something like investment return. You know, if you've had a great last four years, that doesn't mean the next four will be great or vice versa. So there's kind of two pieces to an actuarial experience study, which make it kind of interesting. There's more of an objective piece, which is just doing all the number crunching, which of course we love. And if you gave that data to any actuary, any good actuary, they should get the same answers. Okay? But the hard part, the subjective part, is looking at the results and evaluating the data, interpreting it and making a judgment of how that impacts what's going to happen in the future. Again, forward-looking always on the valuation. When we talk about assumptions, we put them in two categories, economic assumptions and demographic assumptions. And economic assumptions are those related to the general economy. Demographic assumptions are those that impact people, what happens to people. Okay, and you can see the kind of red arrows there. That's our focus today. So people retire, they terminate employment, they may become disabled, they die at some point and payments stop. And then when they terminate, they have a right to take a refund of their own contributions if they're vested and give up their monthly benefit in the future. So again, these are all things that members do, and that's what we're looking at today. We will talk about economic assumptions in October. All right. So specifically for demographic experience and how we look at that, we actually drill down on the data. We look at what happened to each individual member and compare that with what was expected to happen using those assumptions. Now, if we're analyzing the retirement assumption, we can only look at people who were eligible to retire. Otherwise, those other people don't matter. So it's for each, what we call a decrement, a change in status, that we look at this kind of analysis. And when we're looking at it, we have to take the credibility of that data into account, which simply means we have to decide how much weight we're going to assign to what we're observing. Again, the size of the group is very important. The length of the study period, which is why sometimes we aggregate the prior periods. We have eight years, it's more data, it's more credibility. And then, you know, we do have years where unusual events happen. And clearly, 2020 would be one of them because of COVID, when we had the financial crisis in 2008. And that period after that, you know, hardly anybody in the world was getting a salary increase. But we didn't say people are never going to get a salary increase. So we have to take those kinds of things into account. The key evaluation tool when we do this analysis is called an AE ratio or an actual to expected ratio. It's a measurement of the actual experience divided by what we expected would happen. Okay, and remember, when you hear that word decrement, it just means a change in status. So we actually look at this analysis on two different bases. Okay, we look at it on a count basis, it's just the number of people, number of bodies. And then we look at it on a liability basis. Because when we're looking at what we're trying to model and what impacts contributions, we're trying to model liabilities, not necessarily counts of bodies. So let's kind of walk through the process under each of these. So first, on the count basis, we determine the number of members that change status. So if we're looking at retirement, you know, how many people age 55 retired? How many people age 56 retired? Each age will look at that under each category or types of retirement. And Brian will go into some detail on that in a minute. But basically, we're determining the actual part of that fraction, the number of members who actually changed status. And the second step, in order to come up with the expected number, we have to know how many people could that probability have applied to. That's called exposure. So if we're looking at retirees age 55, how many could have retired? Okay, if that probability is 10%, it matters if there's 100 of them or 10 of them, what our number will be. And then we take that probability of retirement times exposure, and that gives the number of expected decrements, in my example, retirements. And then that ratio of the actual number to the expected number is that AE ratio. Okay? The closer it is to 100, the more it indicates at least overall that the current assumption is anticipating experience fairly closely. Okay, and it's generally expressed as a percentage. So that's just looking at numbers of people, bodies. We do the same thing on liability, but instead of just using the number of people, we estimate or we model their liability by using their salary and their years of service. Right, because your benefit formula is 2% times years of service times final average salary. So in that way, we can distinguish different people who have different liability. And there's just a real simple example that kind of drives this point home. It's kind of purposefully set up to be kind of extreme. But if we had 10 members that were eligible to retire who were age 62, and our probability of retirement is 10% if you're age 62. Well, in our group, we have 10 people. But eight of them are low salary, short service. Okay, so $20,000 salary, five years of service. The other two have an $80,000 salary with 20 years of service. And you can see on the liability weighted, that's the salary times the service times the count. So one person with the $80,000 salary, 20 years of service retires. If we looked at this on a count basis, we'd say, well, there were 10 exposure and our probability was 10%, so we expected one person to retire at age 62. And hey, there was one person who retired. And then Brian and I would turn around and do a high five and do the happy dance for actuaries because hey, we were spot on. But if we look at it on the liability side, we get a very different picture. So the exposure is 4 million. Okay, again, this is liability, not counts. 4 million, so 10% probability applied to 4 million is 400,000. But the person who retired was higher paid with higher service. So their actual decrement was 1.6 million. So the AE ratio on a liability-weighted basis was 400%. That's not good. Means we're a lot more liability going into retirement than what we anticipated. Now, we don't usually see that big a disparity, but we consistently see very different patterns on a liability-weighted basis and account basis. And we will lean, we look at both, but we lean towards using liability-weighted. We've been doing this for 20 years. And it makes a big difference in the gains and losses that happen each year in the evaluation if we're using liability-weighted. So we're pretty big fans of that. The other thing we look at with the data, we use a lot of graphs and you'll see a lot of graphs today. But the AE ratio could be 100%, but this type of a fit could happen, where we're way low in part of it and way high on the right-hand side. We don't want an assumption, even if it's 100%, the fit is terrible. And that won't serve us well to, again, model those liabilities for membership. So it's very important that the fit of the line of the assumption fits the actual experience relatively closely. And if it does not, you will see us make recommendations to change that. All right, one more slide before we get into the really fun stuff. And that's just to give you a little bit of background on when we talk about changing assumptions, what's the impact? Mortality is probably the easiest one to think about. So if mortality rates, probabilities of death are lower, that means people are living longer, right? We're paying benefits as long as people live. So if they live longer, the liabilities are higher, right? So it's good for the member, it's not good for the retirement system. Retirement, if people retire later, it generally means there's a decrease in liabilities. They may get a higher benefit, but it's paid for a shorter period of time. Disability, generally, if disability rates are lowered, it decreases liabilities. And then with termination, if termination rates decrease, so more people stick around, we have to fund the benefits for those people, and it generally will cost more. The refund election is kind of a little bit of a wild card. These, again, are people who are vested but decide to take their money out and forfeit their monthly income at retirement age. Generally, if there are more refunds, that decreases the liabilities. Okay, they're taking their money out, we don't owe them anything in the future. But it is possible if their refund is higher, has a higher value than the benefit, that it could create an increase in liability sort of short-term. So those are just, each one alone, obviously, if you do more than one change, they can have a combined impact. That's different than if you just added the two. So that gives you hopefully kind of a good background so Brian can walk through the actual findings on the demographic assumptions and what our recommendations are. And I'm sure he will take questions as he goes through it, so please ask if you have any. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. As Pat said, as we go through, if you have questions, please do stop us and ask because there's going to be a lot of heavy lifting if you haven't noticed already. So first off, I guess, everybody always says actuaries aren't funny. I take offense to that. So we put up this hilarious cartoon about mortality that you guys can read before we get into the heavy lifting. And I can see behind some masks, there's a couple of smiles, so we'll assume that it was funny and we'll move on. So mortality, the first one we're going to talk about, it is probably the most critical demographic assumption that we have in the valuation from a cost perspective. Because as Pat mentioned, the longer people live, the longer we're going to pay benefits, and that directly impacts the cost of the system. So when we go through here, we generally look at the ages that most had the highest liability. So from like 60 to 85, 65 to 85, that's generally the highest liability area. And so we'll focus on those as we go through. And when we're doing this, we build a mortality table, we look at mortality tables. But based on the data, there's always something that's not exact, and so we may need to shift this mortality table. Whether it is saying, we have a little bit better mortality, we can say, use an age setback where a 65-year-old may exhibit the mortality of a 64-year-old. Or we can shift the tables up and down by scaling them. Or there's different tables based on benefit sizes. So you can use a medium benefit size, below medium, above medium. So there's a number of different ways or tools that actuaries have to go through or build these mortality tables. We do know that mortality generally varies by a number of different things. And one of those is your geography or where you live. This graph here is a kind of a good example, pretty interesting. And it shows the life expectancy at birth by state to where the dark green states have better mortality compared to the other states that have the darker red, have worse mortality. And we'll point out that because this is life expectancy at birth, that's a little different than what we look at, right? So as a retirement system, we're looking more at members that are actively working or retired. We don't necessarily care as much about what your life expectancy is at birth. We're again looking at those main ages, 60 to 85. But it kind of shows you that if you live along the Mississippi River, you want to be towards the top, right? Minnesota always has great mortality heading down to Mississippi, it kind of gets worse and worse as you go down. So it's just, it's kind of interesting to see some of this variations in mortality based on your location. So looking at the mortality assumption, there's really two main pieces that we look at. And so we'll look at these really separately. The first one is the current base table or the mortality rates that we use the information from this experience study. We gather all the numbers and we build this base table. This kind of, we start with that standard table and we can make those adjustments we talked about to kind of get a good fit for the individual system. The second part is future mortality improvement. So now that we have a good table to start from, what do we think mortality is going to do in the future? And so as actuaries, we have actuarial standards of practice that we need to follow. And within those, they say that the actuary needs to look at future mortality improvement. We don't necessarily need to build it in. We could say, oh, we think the future mortality improvement is going to be zero, and it's going to stay the same. But we need to consider it, so we will look at that as well. So when we do reflect future mortality improvement, there's really a number of different thought processes on this. Some people think that mortality is going to continue to improve at high rates. We're going to get past this pandemic. We have new medicines that are going to continue to increase life expectancy. And then you got people on the other side that are saying, you know, there's going to be a limit on how long people can live. We've had improvement for so long, this can't continue. At some point, it's going to level off. And so nobody really knows, but we have to kind of take all that into consideration when we're looking at future mortality improvement. And so Pat and I get together and as actuaries, we kind of believe that there will be some mortality improvement. We believe it's prudent to include some as to how much, there's always variation. And this is where, kind of going back to what she was saying before, like, there's a reasonable range. You could have a number of actuaries that may come up with a different assumption for future mortality improvement. We believe that there should be some built in to our mortality assumption. So probably the most common method for projecting mortality improvement is what OSERS currently uses, and this is called generational mortality. And so what this approach essentially does is says that younger members in the system will have more future mortality improvement than the older members. So for example, if somebody is age 65 now, they may be projected to live until 85, another 20 years. But if you have a 45-year-old member, when they reach age 65, they may be projected to live until 86 or 87. And so those younger members will have more years of improvement built in. And all this gets built into our valuation system, so it's inherently built in. So you're not seeing jumps in liabilities every year to project those future mortality improvements. It's really all built in to our system. So it's probably the most advanced tools that actuary uses for projecting future mortality improvement, this generational method. And again, OSERS is currently using that, and so you'll see later on, we recommend continuing using that. So the current mortality assumption for the system, something that we call RP 2014 mortality table. For males, we have a one-year set forward, meaning, again, if you're age 65, you exhibit the mortality of age 66-year-olds. So a little bit worse mortality. And females are set back one year, so the opposite. Don't worry about the name of this, I'll explain it in a slide or two. Doesn't matter as much what the RP means. But for our analysis, we don't have a ton of data over this four-year period, but we've done the prior experience study as well. And so what we did is we took the eight years of this current study and then the prior four. So there's eight years of data to combine those and get really more credible results when we're looking at mortality experience. If we have one year that has a big spike or a really low, it kind of averages those out. It just helps with the credibility and kind of averaging things out. It just helps with the credibility and kind of averaging things out. And using generational, as Pat talked about, those AE ratios, right? Your actual to expected, on a generational basis, we're going to want to be close to 100% because again, inherently, the mortality improvements are built into our system. And so we want to be right around that 100%. So when we get to graphs, we'll look to be right around there. So what did we see during this experience study? So looking at the four-year study period, again, from ages 60 to 85 is what really, we really focused on. We saw the AE ratios were 68% for males and 82% for females. So we had fewer deaths than expected, or less liability was released than what we expected. When we looked at the prior study, it was actually quite a bit different. So it was very different from there, where we had a little bit higher AE ratios. So that kind of was another reason we added those four years together for each study to kind of get that more information. And so when looking at tables, we got our AE ratios, we got our information. Now we need to come up with what table we're going to look at. So for the first time in 2019, I think it was January 2019, the Society of Actuaries came out with a new set of mortality tables, and these were based on only...
What were the AE ratios for the eight years then?
For the eight years? You're reading my mind, so I'm going to jump ahead one, so...
Okay, got it.
Nope, that's all right, we'll look at this here. So the AE ratios for the eight years combined for males were 82 and females were 92.
And how many years of data do you need before you believe you'd have 100% credibility?
So...
Based on the size of the plan?
Yeah, so it's not really years. Well, the times they look at is number of deaths. And so if you're looking at, we look at males and females separately, obviously because we know that that's a pretty good indicator or there's differences between the two. I believe to have, again, it's real technical details for you. So I believe with a 90% probability, with a 5% error, you need 1,092 deaths to be 100% credible or fully credible. So we don't have that many. And so what we'll do is we'll still look at the information that we have here and use that.
So how many deaths do we have in a year?
In a year, so we had, let's see if we have this here. So in two...
Four years?
Yeah. So over the four-year period, we had 97 deaths for males.
Okay.
And 185 for females. So again, we can use this not to be fully credible, so we're not going to use this exactly. We're going to start with a standard table, but we'll still look at the information that we have. And, you know, if it was way off, we would still adjust the table to be close.
Right, got it, thank you.
Sure. So the mortality tables, kind of going back, the new ones that the Society of Actuaries put out are called the PUB 2010 tables, and they're based solely on public plan data. So we've never had this in the past. So that RP 2014 table that we're currently using was the most up-to-date table at the time of the last experience study. So RP is a retirement plan, but it was basically only corporate plan data. They kicked out the public plan data when they were doing this information because it was different. It didn't fit the rest of the data, and so it skewed the results. So they just kicked out the public plan data. And so this was really nice to have these new tables based on solely public plan data because the shape of the mortality tables were different. And what we found recently is that they really do fit a lot of our systems much better. Like what Pat was showing before, that fit is better. And so that's really where we wanted to start. They have a number of different tables. They split them up by teachers, public service, general employees. And we'll make a note that the teachers is teachers only. And so for OSERS, we looked at general because there are other employees within the system that are not just purely teachers. As I mentioned before, the above medium, below medium based on benefits, and just a number of different tables that we can start from. So that's what we did. Again, we talked about what the combined eight years were for those AE ratios, the 82 and the 92% for males and females. So again, a little bit fewer deaths or less liability released than expected. So we looked at these PUB 2010 tables. We started with the standard table, the general members. And that actually ended up being a pretty good fit without any adjustments, just that pure standard table. And so that's the one we recommend going with. And then for future mortality improvements, we use what the EMPERSScale currently is, Nebraska, where they adopted in their experience study in 2020, which was basically one of the most recent projection scales put out by the Society of Actuaries with a small adjustment to the ultimate scale. Essentially, we're reducing some of the projected future mortality improvements.
So on the, using those PUB 210 tables, what's your AE ratio?
You are good, give me two slides.
I didn't see it on here.
I'm going to go, we'll through one slide and then I'll get to your question.
Is that 100% there?
Here, I'll jump ahead, slide 24 is where we go to. Was that?
I'll try to get you to go faster.
You're way ahead of me. So here, we'll look at 24.
Go back to the prior slide, because I couldn't reconcile this with the change in tables.
Here, I'll walk through this one, if you have questions on this, then answer those. So this is really looking at the impact of the new mortality assumption based on life expectancy. So what we have here is an age 65-year-old, males and females. The second and third column are the males and females for the old table, and then the last two are with the new table and in projection scale. So for somebody who's aged 65 in 2021, we'll just look at the males here, and that's kind of same thing for the females. So a male at age 65 is expected to live on average to 84.8 years. So another 20 years with the old table. With the new table, we're saying that same 65-year-old is now projected to live to 85.7. So about a year, year longer. But as we talked about, the generational projection, so a 65-year-old in 2061, so basically somebody who's 25 years old now, when they get to age 65, on the old table, they were projected to get to 88.2. So higher than that 84.8, right? So they're expected to live longer because we have more improvement for the younger members. With the new table, that same 65-year-old in the year 2061 is only projected to get to 88.1. So still higher than it is, but it's about the same as what the prior table was. So we're still improving mortality, but not as high as a rate, so a little bit lower slope, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so where I was going was the females seemed to be going down when I would have expected them to be going up based on what you just showed me.
So you're talking at 2061?
The 2021 female expected is 88.5, and then the new table is 88.2. I would expect the new table to be older, longer.
So give me two slides and we'll get to the female and we'll talk through that. So there, it's different at different ages. So again, we picked one age here, age 65. And so not all the liability is going to be with somebody at age 65. So even if the AE ratio was low or less than 100%, more liability may be at 70, 75, 80, something like that. And so depending on where the liability falls on the ages, it may be different. So again, this is looking at one age, so yeah, it's less for an age 65-year-old female. But had we looked at an age 80, it might have been the opposite. And so it's not just a sheer shifting of the table.
Yeah, I get that. But just given the change in AE from 92% to 100%, it seems like it would at least go up. Oh, go ahead, keep going.
So the first one is the male retiree mortality. So what the graph is showing here, I'm going to walk through. So the blue lines going up are the probability of death, what actually happened. So the actual liability that was released versus what was expected. The red line is the current assumption, what we expect to happen. And the green line is what's proposed, the new mortality that we're proposing. And so you can see down at the bottom, we talked about the blended or the combined eight years of data. The AE ratio is 82%. With the new proposed mortality table for males, we're at 100% AE ratio. So you kind of see it's lower at most years. So for female, a little bit different, same concept with this graph. We're going from 92 to 102%, but you can kind of see that it's not the exact shift at every age. So like, at age 65, we are lowering it. But then at some of the later ages, once you get to 83, 84, there's actually a higher percentage. And so it's hard to tell just based on here where the bulk of the liability lies. If I was better at putting together graphs, I might be able to make the bar graphs darker where there's more liability or something like that, and it gives you a better range. But yeah, it's really lower at some ages and higher at some other ages. So it's just that shift of the table is getting us that higher AE ratio for we were only looking at one age for that example.
Brian, I have a question.
Sure.
When you looked at the current study and then the eight years, this was a couple slides back, if that helps you. For the males, for example, in the current four-year study, we were at 68%, but in the eight-year study, we were at 82%, right?
Yes.
And so my question is, that seems to be a pretty significant difference. So I'm just wondering why you are using the 82% in this assumption down here as opposed to the lower 68, which seems to be more maybe accurate to where we are right now, but I don't know.
Yeah, so with the 68%, it's the most recent four years. So you could say, yeah, it's the most recent four years, that's what we think going forward. But it's not a ton of data. So what we did, we added the prior four years to get the most recent eight years because the more data we have, it makes our analysis a bit more credible. And so if we had 10 years or 15 years, that might help even more. Or if we had more deaths every year, you know, don't want that. But if our bigger system, as Pat mentioned with CalSTRS, you might be able to use a smaller timeframe. But we added those extra four years really to have more data to analyze, and we thought that would make our results more credible.
Okay, I guess that's my question is, because if you put all eight years in, I understand the more data, the better, that we always like that. But that shows that we have 82 people out of 100 that we expected dying, right?
So that means if we were doing on account, 82 actually died and we expected 100.
Right.
Yes.
So, but in the last four years, we only had 68 die out of the 100 we expected.
Right.
And I guess my question is, and you're the professionals, I'm just making sure I understand why this happened. If it looks like people are not dying as much as we want them to in the last four years, I'm concerned that we go with a higher death expectation when that's maybe not what's happening anymore. So I'm just, I just want to substantiate why the 82 is the one we're going with on a going-forward basis.
Right, and I, yeah, and I think it's just mostly to have more data. So as we had in the experience study, I think over the last four years, we had 97 male deaths. And so again, to be fully credible, we need over 1,000. And so we're not, we don't have a ton of data. And so it's mostly to add more information to our analysis. The other thing is because we don't have...
With that number of deaths, it's just you don't have enough credible data.
Yeah.
So when you only look at four years, you don't have enough data to make a prediction that that's going to continue. It's just, you just don't have enough data to make that.
Because if you have fewer than 100 people, then that doesn't really reflect a community reality.
You need 1,000 to be like fully credible, and you only have a 10th. So you didn't roll the dice enough times to get like a credible...
A good number, okay.
And we work on some really small ones, small municipal plans that may only have one or two deaths over a four-year period. And so we wouldn't use just that AE ratio. We'd just use a standard table, because really, two deaths doesn't mean anything.
Right.
And so that's part of what we're doing here too, is looking at the standard table with no adjustments, which was a decent fit, but also not making adjustments because we don't have that 1,000 deaths for every, each gender.
No, that works for me, that's what I was wondering, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to just add one other thing is, remember, we do these every four years, and this is the first time we've had this, an AE ratio that was off this far. And mortality doesn't change that fast. So we really, you know, quite frankly, didn't believe it. We assigned very little credibility to it. And then by aggregating, we recognize it without overweighting it and kind of over-adjusting. And then if it comes its way high next time, we have to switch back. We're trying to kind of smooth that out.
That's good to know, thank you.
You definitely have a higher AE ratio this year than you did. You also have to remember, it's heavily weighted females, so your females take over the financial part of it more than the males do.
What percentage of our group is, do you know that ish? Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Didn't mean it to be a...
No?
Just based on what you said about deaths.
Pub trivia question.
Two-thirds, one-third, or something?
It's somewhere around there.
Wow.
I'll make Pat dig up the numbers as we go through, but we'll...
So even any analysis of male deaths is irrelevant, which I was new.
Exactly.
Yeah, so it looks like, yeah, it looks like the females are about 70% of the exposures that we analyzed.
Great, and as I noted, the disparity that I noted on the males is a lot closer on the females. It was 82 to 92, so if that's the biggest part of our group, and it has the smallest differential, then it's, thank you.
Correct.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm very new, today is my first day.
Congratulations.
Yes, the study, is this primarily for OPS, first of all?
So this is for the Omaha Schools Retirement System. So anybody within the public schools that will do a retirement benefit or that is eligible for the retirement benefit.
So I'm asking and possibly making a statement. Could the numbers be more favorable to the females? Because in education, there's many more women than there are men. Could that be one of the mathematical factors involved first and foremost? Second, a lot of women, from what I see, sometimes don't retire as late as the men do. I've talked to a few people within the district and they stay on a little bit longer. So I mean, I'm just taking the gender factor into the situation for OPS and those numbers of females that are working, if maybe that has anything to do with why you're seeing it being somewhat lopsided. Is that a possibility?
So we do analyze both the males and females differently. So we kind of take them into their own groups. And they do have different rates, so they're kind of built into the mortality tables that we look at that females generally live longer than males, so that is taken into account. As far as what has happened over the last four or eight years, I don't know that we could come to a conclusion. It's a pretty short timeframe. We don't have enough data to say, yes, the females are living longer because of this or the males not so much in the last four years. But we do generally see that trend, and that is baked into these tables, if that helps.
It does help, and I just want to thank you for the humor initially. I'm a cartoon buff.
And as far as the retirement, we'll get to that here in a second. But we do analyze both males and females. Generally, they don't, in aggregate, we don't see a big discrepancy. And so we kind of combine males and females with retirement rates. But we will talk through some of those here in a few slides as well, so, sure.
The improvement factors, remind me, those are coming from EMPIERS?
Yeah, so we're using the same or recommending the same mortality improvement that the state system uses.
And those come from where?
So it is a Society of Actuaries mortality improvement table that we started with, and then took instead of the ultimate projection, which I think is 15 years out from improvement, we used 75% of that, so we just backed off a little of the ultimate scale. So we're using the same scale there, but we probably... So we're using the same scale there, but we probably would have come to the same conclusion here. But we're just-
So you're saying, just trying to reconcile the improvement factor difference between this plan and the RP tables. And I'm trying to understand why we would have such a big difference. Because they seem to be making a big difference in the numbers.
So the improvement scale that we used with the RP tables, or what we currently have is MP or mortality improvement, the shorthand from the Society of Actuaries, 2016. And the EMFer scale is based off the MP 2019 scale. So every year, the Society of Actuaries comes out with a new mortality improvement scale. They get another year of data and they build that into their improvement scale. So I think they started in 2014. And every year from 2014, they've said, okay, here's where we think mortality is going to be or the improvement is going to be. And then with 2015, they said, ooh, we kind of overshot it. We're going to back off a little bit. 2016, they backed off a little bit. Every single year, they've backed off their projection on how much mortality is going to improve. And so that's the biggest difference is that 16 to 17 to 18 to 19, we've backed off or the Society of Actuaries has backed off how much they think that mortality is going to improve. And that's part of the reason we built in that 75% of the ultimate scale or the ultimate rate is because we've been seeing this and like, are you sure you're right? We're going to back off a little bit. As well as that information, those mortality improvement scales don't have COVID reflected. So we were expecting that there's going to be a drop after 2019 that there may be more deaths than were projected. And so those were kind of the two main things that we looked at.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so we've gone through the female, male. Just quickly, we did a lot of this analysis on the retirees because that's where the bulk of the data is. It's pretty standard to use the same family of mortality tables for the other statuses. Your active members, your disabled members, beneficiaries. And the society has standard tables for each of these different groups. And so we recommend using those as well, based on what we looked at for the retirement tables or the retirees. So lots of heavy lifting there on mortality. I'm hoping that's the big one. The next one that we look at is retirement. And this is retirement from active status. So anybody that has already left active status, does not currently draw in a benefit and then retires later, they're not including this. This is only from active to retirement. And we have the rates that vary by a number of different things, including your membership group. So whether you're a classified member or a certificated member. Each tier, there's different benefit tiers. They have different retirement eligibilities. And so we have different rates by tier. And then also, if you are eligible for an unreduced benefit or what we call early retirement, we have certain rates for that group. Once you're eligible for an unreduced benefit, the very first year that you are eligible for that, we have a set of rates. And then after that, your second and beyond years of being eligible for an unreduced benefit, we have a separate set of rates. Because we have noticed difference. We looked at them combined and we looked at them separate and noticed a big enough difference that we had separate assumptions. We sometimes look at the male and female. And again, that's generally not a big difference between males and females overall when we have all the data. There might be one-offs here and there. But we combined those, again, the more data you have, the more credible. And we didn't see a big difference between the males and females. And so those are not separate rates for retirement. To be clear, so the tiers two, three, and four, that started after 2013, don't have a lot of data, maybe a few of them fell or came through, but really no retirements because they're so new. And so we used our professional judgment to set those retirement rates based off of the tier one information. So our analysis, what we found is that there were fewer retirements than we expected during this study period for both the certificated and the classified member groups. And so if you look at the chart up here, I'm going to walk you through. Pat talked about the exposures. And really, this is the number of people that were eligible to retire in those groups. So if the first one we're looking at, the certificated early retirement, we had 1,281 that were eligible to retire. And one person could technically be number of, or multiple exposures. So say I was eligible to leave an early retirement in the first year of our study, in 2017. I decided to keep working. The next year, I'm still eligible for early retirement. I'm going to be another exposure. So you could really have one person being four exposures in this group as you go through. The actuals, obviously the number of people that actually went from active to retirement, what we expected based on the assumption, and then we have the AE ratios on a count and weighted basis. And so you can kind of see across the board on the AE ratios that we were lower, fewer than expected. So we'll see a number of these graphs. You've kind of seen the mortality ones. You're going to see a lot more here. Hopefully we can get through or pick up the pace on some of this. The one thing we added here is the purple bar. And the purple bar is from the prior experience study. And so the blue bar is really actually what happened during the most recent four years. And the purple is what happened for the prior four years, that prior study. And so we did take that into consideration. Again, we don't want to overreact, make too big of a movement and then come back. So we kind of took both of those into consideration. So this is the certificated early retirement group. Very minor changes, just at age 55, we lowered it a bit. And so the AE ratio went from 82 to 91. So real minor, small group that's eligible for early retirement. The certificated select assumption, remember the first year that you're eligible for unreduced retirement. Again, slight changes, lowered it a bit. Our AE ratio comes up from 63 to 81%. So kind of lower it at most ages. And then the last assumption for the certificated group is that ultimate assumption. So unreduced benefits after your first year. And again, changes at a few ages, but really tried to get a better fit here. And so our AE ratio came up from about 90 to just under 100%. So again, lots of graphs, but it's kind of sometimes easier to see where we're moving with lines. For the classified group, early retirement, again, a few changes, some at 55, 60, 61, but bumps the AE ratio a little bit closer to 100% based on what we were seeing in the last couple of studies. The classified select assumption went from 89, oh, sorry, 99 to 101%. So we were pretty close here. Again, just a few minor changes to make that fit a little bit better from the data that we saw. And then the last retirement assumption that we looked at was the classified ultimate assumption. And the biggest change here was that we saw not a ton of retirement or we saw people waiting to retire a bit longer than we thought on each of the last two studies. And so we extended the assumption to be 100% at age 75 instead of assuming that everybody would ultimately leave at age 70. And so you can kind of see then the actual to expected ratio or your AE ratio as well there going from 72 to 97%. So that's probably the biggest change, just lengthening out when we're expecting people to retire. Yes.
With the classifieds, I've noticed that their starting age is older. Like they may be starting their career at 60, 62, and thus working till 75. Have you guys noticed that and do you take that into consideration, their starting older?
So as far as the data, when we see them start, when we're doing the experience study, we're really looking at what age you currently are and whether you're eligible to retire. So if somebody starts late in their career, they may not be eligible to retire. So they're not in the exposure. But whether you start at 62 or 32, if you are both eligible for the same benefit at the same age eventually, we're really looking at you as the same exposure. We're not breaking that out. So I don't know if that answers your question or not. So that's what we looked at for retirement. Termination. So termination is essentially anybody that left active employment for a reason other than death, retirement, or disability. Anybody else that leaves gets thrown into this termination group. And so again, we have some, the charts up here. We looked at data based on certificated and classified as well as male versus female. What we found is that the certificated group, males and females, did not have a big discrepancy in how their termination rates played out. And so we combined them. And they were combined in the last study as well or the last valuation as well. So we continued that trend. But with the classified group, we actually did see a difference between males versus females. And so we have separate rates for each of them. So for the certificated group and the classified males group, both of these groups, we had an AE ratio that was greater than 100%. So we had more liability that was released from the system than was anticipated. And what's really interesting on these is, if you go back to that math problem Pat made you do 30 minutes ago with the count basis versus the liability weighted basis, you can kind of see this on the far two columns over here to where the count AE ratio is less than 100%. But on a weighted basis, it's over 100%. And so if we were only looking at count, let's say for the certificated group, we have an AE ratio of 90% on that total. So if we just look at that, we would say, okay, well, we need to, we need to lower our assumption because we don't, we have, we're expecting too many based on count. But if you look at the liability that's going out, and again, we're valuing this plan based on the liabilities, not on the head counts. And so we actually had more liability that was released than expected. So again, that really, I feel like drives home the point of why we look at this liability weighted basis instead of count basis on a lot of these assumptions. So each of these two, the classified and the, or the classified males and the certificated, were above 100%. When we look at the classified female group, their AE ratio for both count and weighted were about the same and both of them were below 100%. So again, less liability, less counts than we expected. So we recommend a few minor adjustments to these assumptions as well. And see that on the next few graphs, kind of the standard graphs that we've shown you.
Um, Brian, can I just ask a quick question to make sure that my working assumption through this whole thing has been correct and I'm not, you know, off and left field?
Absolutely.
But when we're talking about more liability released, what we're really saying is we have less liability going forward. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a reduction in our liability. When we say more liability released, it means we have fewer payees. Is that right?
So somebody that's terminating or leaving active status, the liability that they have as an active terminating, no longer an active. So yet, it's still in the system because they, we eventually need to pay those members. But what we expected to leave based on termination, it's, yeah, instead of a person, it's the liability that's associated with that person terminated. If, so instead of the person terminating, their liability is terminated.
So it's good for the OSers. If we're at 100% or above, we end up spending less money.
That's generally, yeah, generally where it happens.
As a general rule, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so certificated, male and female, again, we looked at them separately and we decided to keep them combined. So the minor adjustments we had here, the green line, you can see early on, a little bit less. We're expecting fewer terminations and later, just a little bit higher. And so our AE ratio doesn't budge much, but goes from 108 to 106. Just minor, minor fit adjustments. For the classified male group, again, minor adjustments. And you can kind of see even in here, a lot of times you don't have a lot of data. And so you see those high blue bars in the middle. We don't want to jump up there just because that's what we saw. We kind of don't think that's appropriate. We think that normal slope of the line is a pretty good fit. So minor adjustments, so we go from 116 down to 111. And again, we don't want to over-adjust all the way down to 100% and then maybe have to jump back up. So we make small adjustments if we can. And then the last group, the classified female group, again, they were the ones that were a little below. So we go from 90% to 100% by lowering the termination assumption at most ages. Those are kind of our graphs for termination. The next one is the election of a deferred benefit for somebody who's terminated vested. So somebody that left active status, they had enough years of service to be vested in the plan but have not yet started drawing their benefits. So this member really has a couple of options. They can take their employee contributions and leave the system or they can wait until they're retirement eligible and then start drawing a benefit. And so we look at this because we need an assumption to decide what they're going to, what we assume that they're going to do. So currently, again, we see a difference between the certificated and the classified groups. Currently, we assume that 80% of the certificated group stays and waits until they're retirement eligible and takes the benefit. And 60% of the classified waits till retirement eligibility to take a benefit. We looked at all this information and we actually found a little bit of a break, which we kind of thought made sense. The more service that you have, the higher chances that you're going to wait and take your benefit at retirement. So earlier on, you know, you got a long way to wait until retirement. Maybe there's a better chance that you take your money and run. And so we did split it up this year based on years of service. So the certificated group, we split based on those who had less than or more than 15 years of service. And the classified, the split was a little bit clearer at 11 years of service. And so we split those out. And so recommending for the certificated, if you have less than 15 years, 80% wait and take the benefit, 15 or more years, 90% wait. So again, higher waiting and taking with the longer service. And then 65 and 75% for the classified group at that 11 split. So just a minor adjustment for this as well, but we did split it based on service. Disability, so members leaving active status that become disabled. Currently, we actually have no assumption in the valuation. We've seen very few disabilities. And so we just, to simplify, we say nobody's going to become disabled. So we look at how many disabled or disabilities we had. And in the four-year study period, we had three. So again, very, very few. We said, we're fine with our assumption. We're going to keep that at none instead of complicating things and adding another assumption for a few members. Couple other minor miscellaneous assumptions, just to kind of have full documentation. Marriage assumption, reducing it from 100 down to 85%. We don't have a ton of data on this, but we don't think 100% of active members are married. And so we've been around somewhere between 80 and 90% for most of our systems. And so lowering that a little bit. And then the difference between males and females is keep that at three years. And that's, I feel like, a pretty standard assumption across most public systems.
Um, Brian, I guess I understand why death and disability and retirement and termination are relevant. But how is married, why do we even have a marriage assumption? What difference does it make?
It's a great question. So there's optional forms of benefit payments when you retire. So whether you take a single life or a joint and unit, and so that helps us. Who's going to take that or the different pieces? For the commencements of benefits, so if somebody is term vested again, what ages are they going to start drawing their benefits for that group that's going to wait until retirement? And there's little data, but what we did see was right around their normal retirement age. And so we continue to keep that, what they're going to retire at in normal retirement. Oh, so lots of stuff we just went through. What does all this mean? What did it do to our costs, right? So this chart here shows our total contribution rate, starting from the left over. So we have baseline, which was in the valuation. And then each assumption that we changed, how does it change our contribution rate? And so starting with the baseline, we're at a little over 27.5%. Termination and the refund election basically didn't move it. Retirement was actually the big one that moved the total contribution rate and it dropped it by about half a percent. And the biggest reason for this was extending that, the age of the retirement. So if we're retiring five years later, then there's a longer period to fund the benefits over. And if we have a longer period to fund the benefits over, we can reduce the cost to fund them instead of funding it over a shorter period. So that was really the big driver of cost reduction. Miscellaneous didn't do much. Those are the marriage assumption. And then mortality bumped us up a little bit by assuming that people will live longer. So a little bit higher cost. And the last slide we have here- And the last slide we have here is the estimated cost impact from all these demographic assumptions. So our liabilities overall dropped by about seventeen and a half million. Funded ratio would come up by about half a percent. And then, as we mentioned, the total, I won't go through each of the pieces, but the additional district contribution, the rate, came down by about thirty-seven basis points. And so what does this mean for the additional district contribution? Down by a little under one and a half million. I will clarify that this is all an estimate based off the one-one-twenty-one valuation. These changes would not be implemented until the one-one-twenty-two valuation. So we're going to have a different dataset, different demographics. These numbers won't be the exact that you see here. They should be in the same ballpark unless something major happens with demographic changes. But it's more of a general ballpark area where we should see things change. The other thing to remember, as Pat touched on early on, is this is just demographics. So we will have another set of assumptions with the economic, your investment return assumption, pay changes, payroll growth, all those that will also come in, that will have another effect here. And I'm guessing it might not, it'll be, they're usually a bigger impact than the demographics are. These usually are less impactful on the costs. So now that we put everybody to sleep with all this information, are there any questions on anything that we went over?
Just on that last slide, so what you're saying is that with these assumptions, that there may be as much as a one-point-four-million-dollar reduction in what our, excuse me, baseline contribution would be, but we should anticipate that due to payroll raises and other things, that that would be offset?
We don't know where the economic assumptions will end up being. I'm just saying, like, don't expect exactly a one-point-four-million-dollar reduction in the contribution because there's still more assumptions that we need to analyze.
Got it.
So that number will change once we have everything combined.
If this was all we were doing, though, the X, so that's one-point-four-million, less than, excuse me, the baseline of twenty-two.
Correct.
Recognizing this is all best guesses.
Exactly.
Leading to next best guesses, leading to next best guesses.
That's what actuaries do, is we make lots and lots of hopefully good guesses.
My dad always said he was a professional guesser. That was his job.
And also, these are based on January twenty-twenty-one demographics.
Correct.
So by the time we get to twenty-twenty-two, in addition to everything else, these numbers are going to look different.
Yes, we'd hope they'd be in the general ballpark, but depending on how things change before next year, they could be different, yes.
So based on the timeline, I think this is initial recommendations for demographic assumptions. And we adopt all of them in our November-December meeting. So this is the demographic assumptions, and then we have the initial economic assumptions. Then we take action on both of them then, in November and December?
So I think that would be up to the board. If you would like, you could take action on only the demographic section that we went? Okay, we can wait till October and do everything if you like.
Yeah, I don't really...
It's really up to you.
Yeah, no, I really don't want to.
Okay. It is a lot for that digest.
Cecilia says I don't want to.
Well, and the big assumptions have to be discount rate. So all this is, I'll say noise, it's meaningful. The discount rate will overshadow all this.
Got it, good. Are there any other questions besides mine?
And one other thing, you also want to see the impact of both of them together, right, and not look at them separately.
Yep.
See, if Pat was here, he would have known that.
Nope, he wouldn't.
You would have had to tell him. Okay. Are there any other questions? No, okay. That was amazing. It was impossible information, but you managed to make it.
I'm not sure I've ever had an amazing describe an actuarial experience study presentation, but I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
You could do it. Thank you. I believe that's the end of all of our business today. Yes, okay. So I guess we would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Second? There's no second, so I guess we're going to stay. No. Was that a second, Mr. Head? Okay. We have a motion and a second roll call.
Block.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Yes, please.
Head.
Aye.
Hersonbach.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Logan has left the meeting. You have five ayes at five fifty-nine.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time, and we'll see you on September second.